To the flag, United States of America. We come up, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Dr. Harrison, over to you to provide updates.
Great. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, a happy new year for our first official board meeting of the year, despite having had a very productive meeting last week on the Capitol project. I do hope everyone had a healthy and enjoyable holiday season. I want to extend my appreciation to the many families that demonstrated responsible actions over the break by limiting their travel and restricting those whom they visited with. Additionally, my thanks to the families that did travel, but also complied with the New York State travel requirements. It is actions such as this that help us to really work together in a partnership to ensure safe school spaces and to help provide for the health and safety of our students and our faculty and staff. So, thank you. So when we think about our situation now and you consider the communications that I sent to school community over the past week, I do believe that we are seeing some of the projected spike in the COVID cases as a result of the holidays and the socialization that individuals may have participated in. As a result, we certainly have seen some cases that have really evolved in our schools. So we are working diligently to ensure that we're managing all these cases responsibly and in line with all of the guidance. At the same time, we're in the midst of transitioning into new sets of guidance that are before us here in the state of New York. Really, two tiers. The first, I communicated in the weekend newsletter, and that really relates to the mandated quarantine period being reduced from 14 to 10 days. Of course, there's some nuances associated with that where one must be symptom-free or have diminished symptoms to be able to return from that isolation or quarantine, and one must monitor their health between days 10 and 14. As I said, I communicated this information last week, and we are implementing this new guidance actively here in the district. The next layer of new guidance was issued by the Westchester County Department of Health, and it pertains to how individuals in schools are to be identified for quarantining. Here, that I would say, hate to say this, use this phrase, but I think it does apply, that broad-brush approach to identifying individuals to be quarantined will be eliminated. So, for example, in the past, if we had a positive individual in a classroom, that entire class would be quarantined. And then if we went into a school bus situation, we'd be looking at possibly quarantining all the individuals there. And then potentially, in cafeteria settings, in Main Street School, middle school and high school, you could have large numbers of students that would have been quarantined under past practices. Right now, we are transitioning to new guidance that has been issued by the county department of health that will greatly diminish the number of individuals that will be quarantined. They are asking us to really look to only quarantine those that have been within close proximity, even when wearing masks for an extended period of time. So we're thinking of, you know, that 10 minutes within a six-foot distance within a certain period of time. So in looking at doing that, we know there's transition. We know there's going to be a little bit different type of work that we're going to have to do with our own efforts to perform what we do refer to as our internal contact tracing process. Essentially, where we're going to have to workshop each and every case to indicate where we believe quarantining may need to take place. So we are going through this process of this transition. We have met with our administrative team. We've met with our union leadership today and sent out communications to the entire district staff. We'll be following up with communications that will go to the school community that will outline what these new protocols will look like. And in doing so, we're going to transition into a place where I assume there's going to be a little bit more anxiety as we get used to it, because we're not going to be quarantining as many folks. But at the end of the day, what is going to happen here is that we're going to see fewer students quarantining and fewer teachers having to quarantine. So at the end of the day, the result is really going to be more time in school for students learning, more time in school for teachers teaching. So we're going to have to always make sure we're going to err on the side of caution. Anytime where there is a question, we're going to have to be cautious. We're going to have to consider who needs to be quarantined. And it may be a little bit larger than those immediate few numbers that may surface out of the initial workshop efforts that we would look at. But I think this is a responsible measure that's being recommended by the county department of health. And frankly, I believe it's more consistent with the practices that I'm hearing of across the state. So to folks who I'm watching from home, I encourage you to check your email. You'll be getting a letter from me that will outline these new procedures, and it will link to the specific either New York State Department of Health guidance or the Westchester County Department of Health guidance. I also wanted to provide some updates related to vaccinations. As everyone's probably heard, the state has moved on to stage 1B of its vaccination plan. And in doing so, that means educators are now eligible to receive the vaccine. So in thinking about that, we have to really caution you to understand and set expectations that that does not mean that all of our faculty, staff, administrators are going to be quarantined by the, or I'm sorry, vaccinated by the end of the week. Frankly, this is going to be a long process to be able to get everyone who is interested to actually receive the vaccine. The state has opened up their registration process, and if one was to go on now and you met the criteria to be eligible to receive the vaccination, you likely would not be actually getting an appointment for the first dose until the middle to end of March at this point in time. So when you think about that, first dose, middle to end of March. I can tell you that we sent all the information out to our staff, that our staff have been really engaged in attempting to sign up to be able to get their vaccines. But again, it's going to take time. Again, I heard today, middle of March. I know some folks are looking to travel to different parts of the state to be able to get it where there may be less of a demand. But in doing so, it is going to be a process. And when we're thinking of, you know, staff being completely vaccinated, and again, that is those that are interested, because as a school district, we cannot require individuals to receive the vaccine. But when we think about this and getting two doses of the vaccine, realistically, we're thinking about staff that's going to be vaccinated completely by the fall as opposed to thinking about everyone receiving both doses this spring. It may not be a reality for us. I can tell you that leading up to this release of information from the state, which really, they flipped a switch over the weekend. We knew that it was coming, but we didn't know exactly when staff were going to be able to be vaccinated. And we didn't know what the process would be. So preparing for that, as we have with many aspects of the coronavirus, we were planning ahead. We developed a partnership with CVS in looking to administer a vaccine clinic here in the district for our employees. While certainly the state has accessed the vaccine sooner, where this may come in handy is when we think about this down the road. As staff work through that first round of vaccines and they acquire them through the state, the district may be able to step in, assuming that we're getting the same vaccine at CVS versus what the state is providing, that the second dose may be able to be administered sooner by CVS in a district-based clinic. So it is kind of like a fallback position, but I want to assure the community that we are trying to do the best we can to make sure that all of the educators and staff members in our buildings are able to get the vaccine as soon as possible. The final thing that I do want to share this evening, that the district has made some revisions to its emergency plan, which have been posted on the website. These are a result of some legislated changes. And as a result of that, at the February 9th meeting, we will have a brief public hearing for anyone that wishes to make a comment. And then following that, again, on February 9th, the board will adopt the changes. So that said, if you are interested in reviewing the changes to the plan, please visit the district website where a copy of the revisions are posted. And feel free to email the board of the district administration with any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. We'll move on to our committee updates.
I'm sorry, if you don't mind, is it possible to ask a question as a follow-up regarding COVID?
Sure.
Great, thank you. First of all, Dr. Harrison, I just want to say thank you. And I'm sure all of us feel similarly about the work that you, administrators, faculty and staff were doing to get us through this pandemic and especially in this past week to deal with the trauma of seeing, you know, white supremacists and conspiracy-fueled extremists assault the Capitol. I know teachers have been working with students and that, you know, that's a tough issue to deal with. So, you know, between pandemic and this, it's a lot. I did want to follow up, you know, in addition to your efforts, thank you, with looking at vaccination. I know that some trustees had expressed interest, and you had discussed the possibility of doing some surveillance testing. And I just was wondering if that's still something that's on the table and could, I mean, especially as you're noting that there's, you know, a rise in cases following the break. Is that something that continues to be discussed? I certainly support that being explored, and if other trustees want to weigh in, that'd be great. But I guess first to you, Dr. Harrison.
Yeah. It's something we haven't advanced the conversation beyond where we were. And frankly, we're working diligently, very long hours, to enable us to just to focus on what our needs are today. If we were interested in pursuing such a model, it is one that we could certainly implement. As you recall, Ms. Stein, Ms. Ellis and I, in our presentation going back a few meetings ago, we outlined the related expenses associated with administering such a program. So one, we could take a look at doing that and developing the appropriate methodology to do so. I know in speaking to some of my superintendent colleagues, it is a discussion that other districts are having as well. There is also a conversation that has surfaced just this week with school superintendents that through a partnership with the Department of Health, we may have the ability to request the free tests. That would be the Binax Now rapid tests that would be used in a state-sponsored testing program such as that a district would have to administer under the yellow zone, orange zone, red zone program. So the county is actually looking into whether the state would provide such tests, because our understanding is that they're developing a healthy inventory of those tests at this point in time. So with the support of the Board of Education, we certainly could explore that further and come back with a recommendation, should that be your desire.
Right. I would just ask the executive team and the board president if they could inquire of the board, you know, whether they would support such a measure.
Michael, we'll take that up. I think, you know, in part, we need to understand, under this new possible option, what that would look like and what would be, A, the timing for it, and B, you know, any costs or other staffing needs that we would have. Dr. Harrison, if you could try to get some additional information on that so we can then have a more informed discussion, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
So with that, we'll move on to our committee updates. I think we can skip the B and G updates. I think that was extensively covered at our meeting last Thursday. So communications, Beth or is it someone else who's going to provide the update on the last communications meeting? Okay. Go ahead.
And I guess the date of the last communications meeting was the 23rd of December. And as it happened, our discussion was around COVID reporting. And in particular, it was around asking parents and guardians to communicate with the district on weekends and holidays. So that was really the, talking about through those logistics. Because it was a shortened meeting, was really the bulk of our discussion, if I recall correctly. We put over some other items to the meeting coming up on the 20th, I think, of this month.
Yes, that sounds correct. And it also led to some communications that not only targeted communications about the weekend and vacation periods, but also putting some priority placement to the holiday Google form for COVID reporting, which served us well because as community saw from the letter that I sent out, and I think it was on New Year's Eve, that we were closely monitoring and working with families who had children who had tested positive or been exposed to those that tested positive. And I believe our meeting on the 20th, we're going to focus on some advocacy topics as well.
Thank you. Dave, is it you or someone else who's going to have the curriculum update?
I can do the curriculum.
Perfect. Jane, go ahead.
Okay. And Dave, feel free to jump in. I'm a terrible note taker. We talked about the challenges of running a school in COVID. That seems to be on everybody's mind. We took a look at the parent survey and with a close look at teaching and learning with student engagement and a discussion around that. And we also talked about how well the Wednesday afternoon collaboration is going with the teachers and the PD and the staff. Feel free to add anything that I left.
I had one piece. We also had a pretty robust discussion about student engagement as it pertains to the curriculum in the pandemic and teaching online and all those kinds of things. It was a very engaged conversation. And I would also add that the curriculum committee is having really robust conversations around different approaches to curriculum and thinking about the current times that we're in, et cetera. So it's been real, real good, good work thus far.
Thank you.
I would say maybe the conversation that we had in the last curriculum committee meeting will parlay into roundtable discussion at a future meeting.
Sounds good. Policy.
I don't know which trustee.
I'm muted, sorry.
Aaron was trying, she was muted.
I was muted, sorry.
Go ahead.
So our last meeting was on December 9th, and it centered around the 5200 series, which is part of the Student Policies 5000 series. And specifically, we talked about the organization of student clubs and extracurricular activities and our policies around that, in broad strokes. Beth, is anything important?
You got it.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything to add from their liaison assignments?
I'll just mention, I attended via Zoom the West Putt School Boards Association advocacy committee meeting last night. And they do have their annual meeting, obviously, also will be via Zoom with our legislators coming up. So I'll send information to the board about that, because you can sign up and have a chance to talk to our state legislators as we advocate on behalf of schools in terms of, we're starting our budget season, but the state is also looking at how it's going to fund education, support education. And there's different approaches that we're considering in terms of when we speak with them and also learning what they think they'll try to do already. So that's early February, I think the 4th of February, if you want to pencil it in.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. And I think, you know, this year, since that will be facilitated via Zoom, it may make it easier for certain people to participate who haven't been able to participate in the past. Anyone else have a liaison update?
I did ask the, one of the people who runs I Ask Cab to report out to me because I wasn't able to attend this morning. I don't know if Dr. Harrison was able to attend. So, I mean, perhaps it would be better, instead of giving secondhand information I got from Ms. Tomeney, I'd appreciate if you would update the board.
Absolutely. So this morning, we had the monthly cab meeting, which as we've become accustomed to, has been very well attended by our students and community members. Today, we spent much of the time focused in a series of breakout sessions where we were developing ideas and priorities for programming for our community moving forward and with a specific focus on the challenges that we are all facing in life today, whether that is the stressors associated with COVID and hybrid learning, the challenges on one's life and the new wave of concerns and stressors that have hit us now from national politics. So in these individual breakout sessions, groups were charged with coming up with a series of proposals that the I Ask Board could consider for programming for the balance of this school year. The groups were mixed between students, staff, school staff members, village staff members and community members. And as a collective group, the goal was to come up with between 10 and 15 ideas that could be considered for future programming. And the group did an awesome job. Our students, as always, were fabulous and creative and rarely transparent and honest in sharing what their needs are. And at the end of the meeting, we actually had surfaced 13 ideas for programs that are going to now come back to the I Ask Board and as well in the broader group for some development and looking for some really much-needed, timely programming to be able to support our students and communities' needs at this point in time.
Sorry, I was unmuted. Thank you, Dr. Harrison. Anyone else have any further updates? Well, we're at the time now in the agenda where there's the opportunity for comments from members of the community. So if there are any community members that wish to make a comment, you can put your name and address in the Q and A function in Zoom to be recognized. As always, you can also always email us at board@irvindschools.org and can get a response to your questions that way as well. So not seeing anyone, we'll continue on. But there is a second opportunity for community comment at the end, if anyone wishes to do so. So with that, Dr. Harrison, back over to you. And I assume largely Ms. Stein to talk about our long-range forecast at this point.
Great, thank you. Just bear with me a second, if you could, please. So, good evening and thank you once again for providing us this opportunity. Tonight will actually feature the third iteration of the district's long-range financial plan, something that has been an ambition of the Board of Education for a number of years and really took the expertise and vision of Ms. Stein to be able to bring to life three years ago. So as we're looking at this plan this evening, we want you to think about all that we do in the school district and consider the fact that this work all grows from and is based upon our strategic plan and the six objectives that are embedded within that. Everything always links back to our mission and the vision, of course. And as we go through this process, I do want to remind the board and the community that when we set out to develop a strategic plan, we did so with a sights on doing so for a window of five years. The plan does expire, so to speak, this year or mature this year. But because of the challenges that we are facing in this environment, we're not going to look to start our efforts to actually renew the plan until next year, which I think is quite wise because of the work that we're doing in the district on the diversity initiative in partnership with NYU and also our partnership with Castle in developing a plan for the implementation of a K-12 SEL program. So when we think about those two initiatives coming to a head, I think it gives us a foundation from which we can work to begin to renew our strategic plan and having this as a commitment of the board and the administration as we head into next year. So when we think about these objectives, they, most of them really focus about teaching and learning, right? And we think about the experiences kids have in the classrooms. We think about co-curricular. We think about SEL. We think about community connections. But what really underpins all of this is the finances. And without healthy finances and responsible planning related to the finance, financial operational side, that we're not going to be able to deliver on those other objectives. So while we think about the fiscal health and it's number six, maybe we can think of number six in this list as being what it is, something visual, but not a priority, less certainly. It is the foundation for those five that sit above it, because without having a healthy district financially, we're not going to be able to do those other items or do them as well as we would like to. So when we think about our strategic plan, specifically, objective number six focusing there, and we had that objective to set out and to develop the long-range planning process and then to maintain it. So what we see today is an effort and a commitment to that level of maintenance by having the annual conversation in and around the district's finances and doing so just prior to entering the budget season. So when we think about the district's goals for this year, we have really focused on three key areas, two of which I've already mentioned tonight in thinking about the SEL program, our initiative related to diversity and equity in the schools, a continued focus on assessment. And that fourth goal always sits there, and it's related to finance and operation and ensuring that the efforts that we take in the district are always aligned with the strategic plan and are always supporting the work of the rest of the district. So tonight, when we think about that which Ms. Stein is going to present, we want to think about what we need to do to help understand our fiscal future and do so through this series of long-range projections. We would ask that the board think about what happens here and understand that it is a guide. We're certainly not going to hit all those benchmarks down the road. Carol does not have a crystal ball, and if she did, she would have been down at the convenience store purchasing some Mega Millions tickets tonight, I believe. But when we think about where we are, these are projections. So we use it to help frame some of our thinking through the budget process when we think about our immediate finances and the years that follow. We also have to be considerate of the fact that the tax levy, our local property taxes, really connect with such a large portion of the school's funding. So the reliance there focuses specifically on CPI and the local tax levy formula that we will deal with. There's other key drivers that Carol will speak to that are going to influence this. And here, she's going to make projections using the best information available to her. But when we think about things such as health insurance, we think about pension, utility costs, and our projections in and around transportation, that is going to be key. But really, we have to think about a large, the vast majority of our budget, a large portion of it, about 72% of the budget sits with salaries and benefits. And then, of course, we have to be considerate of a lot of uncertainties that exist. We think we can step back and look at the economic environment as we understand it, but it is fluctuating on a daily basis. So we have to be flexible in our approach, and we have to be, continue to focus on the information that is available, rely on that which is certainly being projected by state agencies, and then make wise, conservative decisions as we move forward. So Carol, do you want to walk us through your work and tell us a little bit about what your crystal ball is showing us?
Sure. So as Dr. Harrison mentioned, the strategic plan may expire and may be updated, but this particular objective would never really expire because if we don't have fiscal health, which I'm going to talk a lot about today or tonight, does not, you know, as you said, underpins everything else we're doing. So the key tool that I use to take a look at our health is, this is one of our key tools, and this is the long-range financial plan. So we typically look at the budget year and then five years out. It's a tool. I'm not going to say that it's the be-all and all. It's really just a tool. When you think about budgets, budgets are something, plans that we do every year, and they're a year and a half out, so they're, you know, closer. When you talk about a five-year plan, it's a lot less accurate. So it's just, again, a tool. We use past information to guide what we're going to be creating in the plan, but sometimes it's not relevant. When I look at the past data, I look at trends, trend rates, to see where we've been, and I can project those out. That's a good. That's a good method to do. And if you just did the entire plan that way, you would get one result. But I don't really do that. I take a look at anything that's known information as opposed to just looking at trend ratios. So similar to when we do the budget, I look at past data. I look to see if I can make adjustments. Have we spent more in one category? Have we spent less? I'm doing the same thing in a one-year plan. Maybe not to the exact same extent I would in a one-year-out plan, but certainly in a more global view. Certain things we will know and certain things we won't know. For example, even in the special ed, I know pretty much assuming that a child doesn't move, there's some students that have a residential placement and at some point, they age out. We get certain revenues from those placements. We also have certain expenditures from those. I know when that is ending and that will impact our revenues and expenditures. So there are certain pieces that we do know. Debt schedule is another area where we certainly know that well in advance. I have that out, you know, many years. I did have to make an assumption based on when our new capital project will come online, but I basically use the same debt numbers that we have in there at the moment. And we are going to be looking at a favorable interest rate environment, so that's good news. But that kind of information is also useful when we were scheduling the capital project. So that's the kind of thing we figured out. So the rest of it really relies on other assumptions and educated estimations that we will make. And I'm going to be highlighting those in the next couple of slides. The one thing I do want to point out is that this particular plan will present a push-ahead, you know, push-ahead look, meaning we're not really looking to change any initiatives or make any major changes. So I'm not saying, oh, well, I also know in three years, we want to have blank. We do that year to year. But having said that, this plan will help guide us as to maybe when we could maybe do something like that if we see any major surpluses or deficits. We might need to know to change something. The other thing I want to point out before I go to the next slide or the next couple of slides is that you would never really have a year where your budget isn't balanced, but you are going to see that in the very first year of this. And I'll explain that when I get to a budget plan and make a point about that now. If you go to the next slide, okay, so I'll start with the revenues. Revenues obviously are the key part of a budget. You have to start with your revenues before you can make any expenditures. If you don't have revenue, you can't expend it. In years past, we used to do things a little differently. You used to come up with our expenditures and then say, well, what kind of revenue can we support that? Can we do this? Can we do that? The tax cap has changed all that for us. So we really rely now, as Dr. Harrison mentioned, on the tax cap. There's two key components to that. One is the growth factor, which is looking at physical growth in the tax base, basically new construction. That's how it's defined by the Office of State Controller. And it has an interesting range. I've seen a low of .54 in the last couple of years to a high of 2.39. Last year, it was at 1.018. And this year, that's what it actually is for this coming year. Last year, it was 1.88. So it actually declined a little bit from last year. And it's a little bit difficult to predict this. I really can't. You know, a lot of times, it can be very flat. So I'm using just one. It could be lower than one, but I'm using just one, being very conservative here. The tax cap CPI factor is another big component of this. And last year, we were at 1.81. That was basically the inflation rate. The years before that, we were at two and the inflation rate was actually higher than two, but we were capped at two. But prior to that, we were at 1.26 and even as low as .12. That was 16, 17. So that's a low number. That could happen. It did happen and it could happen again. Alternatively, if it's above two, we only can go to two. So that's also a risk. That means other things are going to be costing us more, but yet our CPI factor is only going to be at two. So for the purposes of this long-range plan, I'm using 1.5. We should be actually getting our number this week or early next week in terms of what it will be for '21, '22. For state aid, state aid is kind of all over the place this year. I made quite a few assumptions. I looked at what we have in our output reports for this current year, what we're going to be getting. I made a lot of different assumptions. And it's a little bit tricky this year because I don't know how much the state's going to cut. We also have expenses that we normally have and didn't have or had more of. So it's a little bit weird what's going to happen. So it's kind of a little all over the place, but I did make quite a few assumptions on state aid. And you'll see that when you go through the plan. There is a, the state cut state aid by, that's about $68,000 to $75,000. And they called it a pandemic cut. I assume that would be continuing for this coming year and the year after. It's, again, something that I'm not sure of, but I want to be conservative in the plan. For sales tax, that's been a kind of a bright spot the last couple of years because they changed the formula and allowed more revenue to flow through. This year, though, sales tax was a little bit down because of spending was down. It's starting to return, I think, a little bit. So we're probably going to be fine this year and will be kind of flat going on. And then I have it predicted to go up afterward. Interest income is another area where we had been seeing some growth as we were able to invest some of our money while we're, you know, when we get it in the beginning of the year and then we get it again in January, the bulk of our money. But this year, interest rates have been really low, like almost zero. Zero to .5, so .5%, not 5%. So it's really low. And so I'm projecting it steadily going up because the feds have said that the interest rate environment is going to stay low. And you can picture why because if they're creating money all the time, they don't want to have to pay a lot of interest on it. So they're not going to have any real interest in raising those rates anytime soon. I don't assume that we're going to get any federal funding past '21, '22. I do think we may, but you don't want to over-assume in a plan. So that's why I'm not. I mean, we did have our money for a couple of years before that disappeared when we had the last recession time. And then we'll, well, refunds, you know, we always get some refunds from BOSI's expenses. We get some refunds because we process the CPSE students and for the county. So we do get some of that money and I factored that in, but I'm using conservative numbers again. And finally, we're going to talk a little bit more about this later, but appropriated fund balance has been a source of revenue for the district for several years. We did lower it a little bit and lowered it to 422,500. You're going to hear me talk later about wanting to continue to lower that as we can and we'll talk about why. Okay, so going on to the next slide. We also have some, obviously, some key expense assumptions. TRS, which is our Teacher Retirement System Pension Match, which we have to pay a certain percentage of our salaries, has been this year, you know, like nine and a half, 10%. They're coming in with that percentage again this coming year, nine and a half to 10%. So we'll see. I'm hoping it stays on the nine and a half percent rate, but if it's at the 10, you know, that's where we'll be. I'll know that fairly soon as well. I kept it 10 and a half, again, conservatively for the rest of the years in this plan. I think, you know, again, the markets have been doing well. They haven't seemed to have been crashing. So again, it's based on a lot of investment income that the state uses to create those rates. And it's a five-year rolling average. So I don't think we're going to have total doom and gloom. And I will talk a little bit later too about reserves. And one of the things we've done is we have started to build a reserve fund for TRS, which could help us in this situation. ERS is a little bit different. It's actually increased the last year, but it sort of is mitigated by the fact that the tier rates are very different. So the tier one, tier two rates are very high and the tier six rates are lower. And as our mix of employees starts to change and people retire and we start to have a little bit more of tier five and tier six, we're going to see the benefit of that. So I'm slightly lowering that as we go forward as opposed to the other way around. Health insurance, we've been seeing some lower health insurance rates. But again, the last couple of years of a plan, the further out you go, the less certainty you have. So I used 6% there. For contractual supplies and things like that, I just used the base 1%. We haven't seen a lot of inflation, but that could start to creep up in the future years. So that might be a little bit too low, but I kept it that way for now. We started to budget a little bit for tax certs. These are the refunds that we have to pay. Mostly, we fund them out of our reserve account, but I started to budget a little bit. And you'll see that I started to add a little bit more each year in this plan to get to a point where we have a little bit more of a cushion in a budgetary sense. But that's money that if we didn't use this way, we could then maybe put to something else if something happened. BOSI's is generally, since most of the services are salary-related, I did use a little bit of a higher number, one and a half to 3%. And the admin fee also considers their overhead and their retirement, health and things like that. So I used the higher number because we've never really seen much lower than 4% in the last couple of years. That's an example where trends show you what's actually been happening. Utilities, I kept it about one and a half, the same as the CPI. And special ed tuitions, I have it at about 3%, which is generally what we've seen as a trend as well. Transportation for the first year, I don't see an increase because we are, we kind of had an over-budget number this year a little bit where we had thought we were going to have a large bid increase and it didn't happen. So that, but then I increased it 3% because in general, that's what we've been seeing as well. Certainly, salaries are a big part of the expenses. We look at the contracts that we know that we've already settled. And then if we have the years out that we don't have settled contracts, I just use tri-borough kind of driven increases there, make assumptions. Capital expenses, we use, we've always been budgeting around $100,000 in like facility expenses for projects, so I put that in there. And I think we already talked about the debt, the debt service. And anything else, if it's a one-time adjustment and if I know it, I put it in. So then when you get to the next page, and this is kind of small on the screen, but maybe you can open it another way. There's a lot of numbers here, but really what you're doing is you're coming up with your revenues. And it's in categories of your tax revenue, your other local revenues, to come up with a total local revenue. And your other local revenues are things like your interest, your sales tax, your charges for the facility use, tuition, having tuition, things like that. And then you have your state aid as your other piece of your revenue. And the state aid, the basic aid is really your foundation aid, your building aid, transportation aid and your excess cost aid for special ed students. Your other aid is, your other state revenue aid is instructional materials, BOSI's and any aid for particular students, believe it or not, also in special ed that you get back in pretty much dollar for dollar, almost dollar for dollar. So you'll see different swings in here. I show an arrow, a green arrow, where we have an increase of 8% in one year. So that's kind of interesting. So what happens there? Again, we had, we get, sometimes we get prior year aid payments that have, these are for aid that was owed to us from years past. Okay, so it's weird, but sometimes the state just does not pay you everything you're supposed to get. And they say, we'll pay you later. Well, sometimes it's like $30,000 we're going to get. Some years, it's $50,000. Some years, it's nothing. It's all over the place. Well, in '23, '24, we're going to get $218,000. It's a crazy number, but they've been pretty much accurate in the last four years of telling us what they're going to get, what they're going to pay us. So assuming they stay on that target, we should be getting that money. But then what happens the next year? We're actually going to get zero that '24, '25. Then we're going to get a small number again in '25, '26. So that shows a swing. So I have to plan for that. That's $200,000 we're going to get in a revenue that we will not get the following year and it's going to cause a swing. And this is where long-range planning does help you because if we were to try to do something with that and increase, maybe start a new program, which we then have to sustain, we would find ourselves in trouble the following year because we wouldn't be able to sustain it. So this would be something where we might want to look at any type of one-time expenditures that we needed to do or maybe looking to bolster reserve or something like that, a tax cert fund, something. So we have to think cautiously about knowing that we weren't going to get that revenue again the following year. So, I mean, I could go through every single number, but that's obviously not something that we really want to do. I'm here to give the bigger takeaways. The other thing you see here is that I've cut the other financing sources. And in this case, since I'm using a program called Forecast Five to do this, I had to put the appropriated fund balance in other funding sources, other financing sources, just to show it. And that appropriated fund balance is what we use to balance, in a sense, to help support the budget. And I'll talk a little about it briefly, but basically, when you have, you have your budget, your revenue and your budget, your expenditures. At the end of the year, hopefully, your expenditures are less than your revenues and then you create what's called a surplus. And that surplus is, you know, your taxpayer money. So it goes back into what we call fund balance. And fund balance is sorted into reserves that are earmarked for certain things like tax certs, workers' comp. We've now started one for capital in the last couple of years and we've started one for pension matches. So those are our reserves. But we also have a 4%, usually undesigned, on balance, which would just be the number that the state controller thinks is a healthy number for us to maintain as a cushion. And then finally, anything else, we're basically supposed to plow back into the budget. So we are using that 422,500 as that number. We do need to start to reduce the reliance on that. And I will show you why I have not put it in the outline three years in a minute. It'll be easier to see why in a minute. I just wanted to point that out. So let's go to the next slide. This is just a pictorial view of the revenue. So you can see it's just increasing slightly, but not, you know, any major increases there. And then you can also see that the property tax is the bulk of the revenue. If you go to the expenditure outlook, again, similar things. Why is there a larger increase in one year on one number and then not the other years? So for the equipment and capital outlay, we restored the $100,000 that we normally have been doing in the past. We did take it out in the 2021 budget at the last minute last year because we knew we were going to have less state aid this year. So we took it out, but I put it back in. So you see a 6% increase there on that one line for equipment and capital outlay. There's salaries are obviously a large expense of the budget. They're the largest expense. And there, here, I think we have some good news to talk about because the salary increases are really keeping to about 2% or under, which is good. With the contract changes that we've been making and going forward, we flattened ourselves a little bit here. I think we were in the three trending fire about 2% to 3% high, you know, range before. And this is a little bit more predictable and more manageable for us because, again, you don't know what's coming down the pike in terms of the tax cap. So if we were, if we have committed ourselves to contracts with much higher rates and I'm going to show a scenario later where I show the tax cap going down, you're going to see the problems that we would create when that happens. So I feel good that this is a manageable number. Benefits, you see a little bit more of a swing this year. The TRS rate went up from last year. So you see the 5.52% increase. That's just primarily the TRS. And then you see where I've increased the health in the last two years. We go from like a little 3%, 3.7% increase to about a four and a half. So different swings based on the assumptions that I've made. Trying to just think. So those are basically the areas. You can see that our debt service numbers are going down in the outline the final couple of years. And that's a trend that we think will maintain a little bit. So we'll always have a little bit of room there. And that gives us some leeway when we're making our planning, our decision on our next, how I do the financing for the next plan. Again, this is just pictorial. You see the different categories of our expenditures and that it's a slight increase going forward. And now we get to the really important part, which is what happens when you start looking at the revenue minus the expenditures. And that's the next slide. So here's where I start to show what the revenue minus expenditures, which we will look at as terms surplus or deficit. So we can't plan for a deficit. We can't have a deficit. And the state will start to run the district for us, which has happened to some districts and I hope will never happen here. But you can see that already for '21, '22, if we do nothing just with this push-ahead assumptions, we're not balanced. So we have to start looking at what it is. And I started out by saying that this is just push-ahead assumptions. I have still to do the detail work for the '21, '22 budget, which is what I'm starting now, to really get the assumptions behind every revenue, every revenue line and every expenditure line. So that's where what's happening now. So obviously, we're not going to come in with a budget that's going to present a budget to the community that's going to be a deficit. And then you see where the following year, though, with some of these other assumptions, that we will have enough money with the one and a half percent increase in tax cap, that we're actually going to create a bit of a surplus. So in '22, '23, with the fund balance appropriation, we would still end with about a $53,000 surplus. And yet, and then in '23, '24, we're going to end with a $174,000 surplus, plus I took out the 422. So that's a pretty good year at the moment. Things are going to be favorable if this trend keeps going. And perhaps my assumptions are a little bit light. Again, we might have more than 1% of expenditures. There might be some other things, so it may not come to fruition. But at least it portrays the fact that we're not going to be in a tough situation. Sometimes when I, the very first time I run this and I see it, I'm like, oh, boy. You know, we're in really trouble. So at least I felt a little bit more comfortable with that. So let's see. So then when you go to the, well, the next slide just shows that pictorially. Obviously, I won't be keying off of a deficit, but we, I'm showing it right now. And then when you get to the next slide, this is kind of, it's a little small to see, but it really is kind of an important slide because it shows what happens when you use your fund balance every year and you appropriate that 422. because it shows what happens when you use your fund balance every year and you appropriate that 422,000. So if you look at where it says beginning fund balance of $7,073, and then it ends at 6, 651. You're thinking, well, wait a minute, we had a, we had a balanced budget, this is our budget, and yet our projected fund balance has gone down. Well, how is that happening? Okay, so it's happening because you are taking $422,000 of your fund balance and you're putting toward the budget. So if we ended the year exactly as we budgeted with all of our expenditures made and we, and all of our revenues received, we would still have a lower fund balance. And that's kind of the point I want to make in terms of using fund balance long-term. That over time, if you keep doing that, you're going to lower your overall fund balance and some point be in a bad situation. So obviously, next year, we would be losing, we would be lowering it considerably because not only would you have the 422 that you're appropriating, but you'd have a deficit of 277. And so you're basically going down almost $700,000. Okay? Then, and you see the '22, '23 year, you're seeing that we had ended with a surplus, but it still goes down because of the 422,500. So when I take it out in '23, '24, plus have a surplus, now you see the fund balance start to go up. Okay, so you start, so those last three years, you start to see where the fund balance starts to, starts to increase. Okay, so it's kind of an important slide to show how fund balance really is affected by the decisions. Now, obviously, we have never ended a year without a surplus, and that's important because we, you know, obviously plan, we don't plan a budget to be spending every dollar. You know, we hope that we wouldn't have to. We make sure we have enough for utilities, we make sure we have enough for special ed tuitions. You can never budget to the pen, you will hear me say that in every budget presentation. So we usually cover that 422 and we keep our fund balance about the same. Some years we even have more surplus than the 422, and that's when we're able to add to the other reserves and things like that. So it's, it's a, I don't want to say it's just a strategy, but we have to be thinking about it because we're talking about the future and making sure that we can always do the academic things that we want to do. We have to make sure that we have enough funds to do it. This is a key point that I really wanted to make tonight. Okay? So if you, if you look at the next slide, you can see in the green chart that the fund balance is going down in those years because we've appropriating it and we haven't had much of a surplus. And even the year we had a surplus, it still went down, and then it starts to go up and stabilize. So when, when we have an opportunity and we have some extra funds, you may want to think, instead of just making another program or doing something with those funds, we might want to think about reducing our reliance on fund balance as a strategy. So, so what are the strategies that you, that result from a long-range plan? And hopefully, I've said most of these already, so it's a review. But basically, you're going to look for any one-time revenues or expenses to either look for opportunities to maybe do a program expend enhancement, maybe do a one-time expenditure that you needed in some sort of, like, maybe we needed to completely change our P A system. It's a couple hundred thousand dollar expense. We might do that in a year where we had money if we really thought there was a rosy future for that year because it's a one-time expense, something like that. Or we would then put it in reserves, which would help us in the future for other unknown expenses. We already talked about timing the capital projects to, you know, to, when debt's reduced, that's something we're already doing right now. We talked about using money for reserves. So these are areas that are, areas that have high impact on your budget. So you want to maintain reserves to keep that from having the budgetary fluctuations. Okay, so going to the next slide, I wanted to show, also show the board and the community, what is the effect of a key financial driver? So we talked about the fact that the CPI factor is a very important one. That's the first scenario that I'll present. And then the second scenario I'll present will show something that not nearly as drastic, but just where you're changing the TRS rates. But I will, I will show it, so you see the difference. It's not realistic to assume that you're not going to ever change anything else, but for the purposes of illustration, I did that so you can see the effect of the one driver. Okay? It does show that we would need to maintain the fund balance appropriation in these scenarios. And it would also show that we would likely need to make some reductions in expenditures or the use of reserves if we were to, if these scenarios were to occur.
I'm sorry, Carol, I'm starting to have a little trouble hearing you. I don't know if the mic moved or anything.
Okay, I'll try to talk a little bit louder, it's hard with the mask on. Okay, so then finally, when we get to scenario one, which is what I call our pessimistic view, I've now taken the tax cap factor to 1% instead of 1.5, the CPI. And while this changes in the first year, a loss of revenue of about $280,000, okay? And you remember, I already had had a deficit before, so now I have an extra deficit. But what you see more clearly is how the numbers start to be read further out every year, and that grows. It's a cumulative effect. So that number not only changes in that one year, it changes for every year going forward. And that's another key point. You start to dig yourself, you can't dig yourself out unless you really start to reduce your expenditures. So barring any other major revenue categories coming in, if your CPI factor is low every single year, you are going to be in, you're going to be in some big trouble. So obviously expenditures would likely be going down if we're in a scenario of such low inflation. We might be able to, we should be able to reduce our expenditures, but maybe not by the same extent that we need to if you're locked into any contracts, any longer-term plan, any longer-term situation. So it's very much of a cumulative effect, and that's what this is, illustration. And we can get bogged down looking at every single number, but I'm trying to just give you the highlights of what you're looking at in terms of how it affects the future. And you'll see that I had to include the fund balance appropriation in every single one. In the next scenario, I call scenario two, here, all I did was increase the TRS rates from the 10.5 flat number, going from, instead of that, it was 11, then 11.5, then 12, and 12.5. So this just shows that where you could be. Now, we've been at those rates. There were years with that, that we had matches of 18, 19, even 20%. Okay, I don't foresee that happening, to get that high again, but I do, you know, it could happen. It could have some major, you know, world event that starts to spiral our markets. Because remember, the most of the TRS money is coming from investment income. Not coming from our matches, and it's not coming from the employees' matches, it's from investment. So here, I am showing that you still have to maintain that 422,5 across the board. And even though we would have a surplus in '23, '24, and '24, '25, you wouldn't in '25, '26. And therefore, if you hadn't kept the amount, you would have a big swing again. So you're showing that you still have to kind of keep that going forward. So just, just from this one change, you're showing, you know, more, a little, it's less pessimistic than the tax cap scenario, but still somewhat not as favorable for us. And so really, in summary, I think, you know, all of this is why we do the long-range planning so we have a handle on what's going on in the budget arena. We basically are keeping to make sure our plans are updated and that when we look at our budget proposals, we're thinking a little bit also more than maybe one year out in the back of our minds. And, you know, basically, that long-range plan is assisting the strategies and the strategies that come out of the long-range plan assist us in really maintaining that fiscal health, that number six I call the strategic plan, so that we can provide the high-quality learning environment that we have come to expect in Irvington. And that now I'll just open it up for questions because I know I went fast.
Carol, thank you very much for all of the hard work and your expert management of the finances that have led us in this place where we're able to have the conversations that we have today. You know, I think a few key takeaways for everyone's consideration tonight. As we go into our budget process, I would recommend that you keep this presentation by your side in your toolbox to help understand and remind yourself, or to help remind us of the impact that different components of the budget have on us, that the different fiscal factors in our environment can have on our school district budget. I would also say that there's some good, really good news in here, and thinking about the work that we're doing. And that even in some of the more difficult scenarios that Carol referenced, because of the work that we have done as a leadership team in recent years, we see the district continuing to land in positive space with finances. When we look at the costs, when we think about management of employee costs, when we think about contracts, to see that number level in, to be around the tax cap figure, below the tax cap figure of 2% is significant in looking at managing expenses moving forward. So when you think about this from a, simply a fiduciary responsibility, that you've done your job as trustees in looking to rein in some of the most significant costs that are going to drive a district budget. So there's a lot of good stories here. We don't want to ignore some of the things where we look at some of those highlights of those years that were mentioned in red. Carol's looking to drive us in a place where we have more fiscal stability, less reliance on appropriated fund balance, increasing our investment in, in our facilities by continuing to stay at a responsible level. But when we think about tax certs, looking to increase the amount of money that we budget on an annual basis for those expenses that we know are going to continue to surface. So Carol, I think that really some great work here. And at this point, Brian, I think we'll stop sharing so we can see one another, or do you want to leave it up?
I would say leave it up because we may have questions about particular slides. And actually, Carol, could you go back to your scenario one? I think it's one slide before this. So I guess I just had a question slash comment. So the only change in this one is that you're changing the CPI factor from 1.5 to 1, right? And obviously, this is showing it across every year with a downward move from 1.5 to 1. But am I correct that, you know, even a one-year shift from 1.5 to 1 still is going to lead to a major or significant negative number in that given year that would have to be managed?
Right, so I could have showed it that way, and maybe that's something I would do in another year just to show how one year might affect instead of all the, all four years. But it's, that $280,000 loss that you have in this coming year would also then affect each of those other years by at least that amount. There was a couple of years where we did have a higher surplus, so we would rebound a little bit. But it is a cumulative loss. You cannot keep, you cannot keep making up and going back, so you would have had to cut something. And that's the point. If you had not, if you didn't cut anything in that year, you would have a cumulative loss. So you would have had to make some changes in your budget that year. And those cuts, then you would be able to recover quicker. When the, when the tax cap goes back up, you would be able to recover much quicker. So, you know, you have to balance the budget, that's key, right, every year?
Obviously, and I mean, obviously, we've been in a somewhat low inflation, low rate environment for a long period. From your different forecast sources, you know, is there any sense in terms of the potential likelihood of a dip in CPI like this, you know, on a one-year basis? Just so we could, you know, try to understand the potential of such a situation?
Yeah, I think right now, we're actually going to see about a 1.5% this year. Right around that, and following the CPI every month for the last year, and we're hovering at 1.5, 1.6 right now. So we'll see where that, where that comes in from the last month. December is a tough month to predict, but spending is usually up. But then there's other factors right now, unemployment and everything else. This is a particularly difficult year. I don't, I don't think it's going to go too low. I, you know, get a lot of economist reports from being a member of NILAF and some of the other business things that I join, and no one has a really pessimistic view of the economy right now. They don't, so it's, it's interesting. Even with the pandemic, people are saying it's going to recover. I think we were really scared last year during the budget talks about how long this recession might last. I think people have calmed down a little bit with that, and they think that the economy is going to recover. There's like a, there's, you know, graphs that show, you know, whether it'll be a V, it'll be a, you know, more of a U, the upside of a U, or more of a V. But there's, there's a lot of different views out there, but no one has really said that they don't think that the economy is going to completely, is going to recover. It may not recover as much as it would have been where we were going with, you know, full employment. But employment's going to come back, things are going to come back. I feel like there's a little more optimism than we felt when we were sitting here last March, you know, in the meetings.
Thank you. Dave, do you have any questions? Maura? Going to the videotape or I guess the video wall, Beth, anything?
No questions tonight, thank you.
Michael, any questions?
I do want to say thank you. I do want to say how important this work is, Carol, I think, for, for the board to take the time to, to study this and if not asking questions tonight to, as Chris suggests during the budget process, to reference this is very helpful. I think, you know, helps us understand the levers that most impact our finances. As you talked about, Carol, it helps us with our ability to know, you know, what we could look at in terms of, you know, if there's a drive to add a program or, you know, whether we can support that over time based on these assumptions. And I think it's also helpful now that we're starting to have multiple years that you can look back at prior years over time to see what our assumptions are. And as you were just noting, Carol, you know, you had done a version of this last year. Then by the time we were related into budget season, all our assumptions were changing. And yet, here we are, and the, the stock market, which, you know, impacts whether the, our contribution to the pension fund will increase dramatically over the next few years or not, is actually in pretty good shape. So, you know, that was definitely something that I was raising in very concern because we used the lesson of the Great Recession, and that would, had been one of the impacts that by the third year out, it was, it was a significant increase. We'd gone from up to, like you were saying, 17 or 18% contribution, which is a huge amount of money. So really important for us as a board and anyone who's, who's interested in understanding the finances of the district. This, this really helps us, so thank you so much. You know, it's a couple of years out, so I'll just, you know, won't dig in too much, but the idea of eliminating the use of the appropriated fund balances, that I just want to note that, I think that's, you may have hinted at that before, but this is probably the most significant public suggestion of eliminating that in the future. Do you know of other districts, of our cohort districts in particular, that maybe don't have, don't use an appropriated fund balance? Because I had heard, you know, the other concern is that we were, that some districts were using too much and finding themselves, you know, going over a cliff in terms of revenue. But...
There is a fine line, Mike, because you can't, you can't keep too many, too much reserves either because then you'll also get cited for, you know, for having tied up the taxpayers' money and then just holding on to it. So that's sort of how appropriated fund balance came to be, that lowered the budget because, or it could be used to lower the budget. But that's not practically how a lot of people are using it. They're using it to enhance the budget and then, you know, then have to sustain that. You have to basically keep creating a surplus of the same amount you're appropriating in order to keep your total fund balance the same. And that's the point I'm trying to make here. By not appropriating it and then having a surplus, it gives you other options. It gives you options like funding your tax cert reserve and funding your TRS reserve, funding your capital reserve, so that those other expenses that still are going to be there, you have options for in years where you would have a spike. So again, if we did have a one-year TRS rate of 18% and we had a pension reserve there, we could use that and not have a swing in the budget and not affect all the programs and say, oh, my God, we have to cut foreign language, we have to cut this, we have to cut PLTW, we have to cut everything because this one year we can't pay for it. Oh, and then maybe next year we'll be able to bring them all back. It doesn't make sense, having those reserves gives you those options so that you're not sitting here with those ugly conversations that you don't want to have and make those changes. So that's why I advocate for maintaining, you know, lowering that lesson, lessening the appropriate amount and then putting that into reserves where you have, you can manage your budget more in a way you want to manage it. So it, it, there's a fine line, though. I mean, every year, we're going to make a recommendation based on what we see in front of us for that year. And I know this year I'll probably be wanting to use that 422 because I don't see how we're going to have enough revenue with interest down and interest income down, sales, taxing come down, and very uncertain state aid. It's going to be a very uncertain state aid year. So that this year, I'm not going to advocate it, but in another year where we have other, some other revenues, I may advocate it.
Yeah. No, I think, thank you for connecting the, one of the dots that I was hoping to hear especially clearly, which is, I think, from when I joined the board, you know, five years ago, and, you know, coming out of the recession, that, you know, we talked a lot about, about the use of the appropriated fund balance. And I guess a couple of things that have shifted over time are that we have some reserves in terms of the capital reserve and the TRS reserve that we didn't have before. So we're shifting, so, and then the other thing I think that you have and the district has done over time is that the budgets are a little tight. is that the the budgets are a little tighter. There are, there is some expectation that there's some surplus at the end of the year that goes into to fund balance. But that number has, I guess, been decreasing. And at the same time, we have these reserves. So it's just, I guess, a shift in the way that we manage and sort of protect our finances over time. The other, I guess, the other. Do you know of any districts of our size that that don't use an appropriate fund balance?
You know, I don't pay attention to that so much, but I would have to, I would have to do a survey on that. I I know in White Plains, we never did it. We hardly ever use any fund balance appropriation. So and that was a larger district. We were able to just budget what we needed and then keep everything else in in reserves. But they had significant tax cert problems. They really needed to keep the funds in those reserves. So, you know, everybody has different issues. We we have to maintain a fairly large workers' comp reserve because of our, we went self-insured there. We still have claims that we have to pay. Everybody has a different scenario, and it's it's hard to maybe compare that across districts. But we can, I can take a look at that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it's, you know, I I know that you're coming from the White Plains School District. That that informs, you know, some of your thinking and how things work there. So I that helps me understand the the suggestion of the shift here. Well, thank you. I think, you know, again, for us as trustees and for the the community, understanding these levers. Also, as we go through budget seasons, like the one that's coming up, helps us to to see the importance of sort of incrementalism and of maintaining reserves for, you know, you can see, as as Brian was asking about, that the shift in in the CPI can dramatically affect, you know, our outlook. So to to both be careful about our annual spending and maintain reserves is incredibly important. I think this helps reinforce that. So thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to just add that, at least in, Carol, we can look at this further. I think there are some of our other cohort districts that do have a larger reserve than we have. I think, you know, historically, when you look at our reserve compared to some of our other districts, you know, we're on the the lower side. So I know that's something that we've been consciously trying to build up, you know, both our fund balance and our other reserves over the last several years to, you know, better protect ourselves. But I think it's something that is is a goal of ours, something that we should obviously continue to do. Because I do think when you look at us relative to other districts, we we don't unfortunately have as large of a reserve.
Brian, I think you make a really good point when, you know, we could draw comparisons to use the White Plains example, where on a regular basis through their budget, they're allocating money from their capital reserves to do facilities projects on an annual basis in the district to some of our neighbors, such as Ardsley and Dobbs, that have significantly larger reserves than Irvington has ever had that I've seen, where they actually, when they're entering the capital project, they're allocating significant funds to be able to support their particular projects. So but to back to the credit of 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 this team and the work that's been done, not only we look to bolster reserves, we've created the Capital Reserve Fund, which didn't even exist. We've created the Pension Reserve, which didn't exist before. So certainly on on the right track and looking not only to manage them, but to build them from year to year. So I'm glad you you raised that point and just highlights the trajectory that the district is on.
You know, and also, obviously, in a tax cap environment, those reserves are even more important to be able to smooth out some of the issues that come up over year over year, where before you could obviously address them in a regular budget. But given the tax cap, you know, we probably do have less flexibility in that regard. So I think, you know, as a board as a whole, we've had these discussions now for the last several years about the importance of the reserves to help deal with those situations. So, you know, again, this is just another step in that process and that, you know, we that we've continued on. Was there anyone else on the Zoom trustees who had a question or comment? Go ahead, Erin.
I did want to say thank you also to Carol. And then just also to say, I went back to last year's plan. And if you look at even last year as compared to this year's, they, there's an alignment. And I know we discussed in depth about last year's plan. So we can see the consistency and how the models are being put together. So I appreciate that. And I guess the one question that I did have, Carol, maybe you've touched on this, but clarify for me how market rate, like how the housing market rate adjustments factor into our property tax revenue? Because, you know, we're reading a lot about realist, the market being 10% higher year over year. So I'm curious how that factors into what we actually receive despite the tax cap rate.
On a direct basis, it says
Has no impact.
It doesn't, okay.
It does not on a direct basis in the tax cap formula. It does, the only thing the tax cap formula has in there is a growth factor, which is really new construction. So it looks at the total tax base and it says, oh, you've gotten some more, you know, buildings or houses. It doesn't really look at the assessment. But what does happen with the assessment is if the overall assessment is higher, right, that and our levy is the same number, then each person is going to pay a little bit less. So it's like, it's
Not really.
Not really, because then maybe your tax
Yeah, the the rate will change, but
It's just the tax rate that shifts.
Yeah.
We ask for X amount of money, we get that amount of money, not more or less.
Right.
It's the tax rate number that goes up or down. What you pay is the same.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's a simple example. If it's, you know, your house was $700,000 last year and you paid, you know, $20,000 in taxes, and then it goes up to $800,000, you may pay, you know, $20,200 because of the budget increase. But it'll just be that now, you know, that's a smaller percentage of your overall value, but it doesn't change, change anything.
So it's it's really just math at that point. But, you know, the formula itself does not account for that. And, you know, a lot of people have think that the tax cap formula is flawed. There are some flaws in it. You know, has it helped rein in budgets, though, somewhat? Yeah, it's, there's ups and downs for it. You know, there's a lot of people that would, I would at least like, if I were advocating for this thing, I would at least say it should always be 2%, but I could plan. Because that's one of the things that, you know, I think business officials have the hardest part. You're asking us to do a five-year plan. You're asking us to plan for the future in terms of managing reserves and managing everything. And we don't know what our future is going to be in terms of our biggest revenue source. So, you know, if it's always a certain number, we can create contracts, we can create better strategies. And so that's something that we've always advocated was, tell us what the number is going to be. You know, don't, don't keep going up and down, up and down, up and down. It's very difficult to plan that way.
And I would say that's one of the areas that where I think New York is different than a number of other states that have tax levy caps. Most other states aren't as formulaic as New York's is. Most are function on a true 2% with a series of kind of if-then statements that exist where there's adjustments that can be made for enrollment, for transportation, for health insurance costs and special education needs. So New York is a little different than other states there. So that certainly is an area that I know a lot of professional organizations, including School Boards Association, continue to advocate for. But realistically, I think as, we're not going to see any adjustments to this because this is something that is just so popular with the average taxpayer and the governor such ownership over. I don't foresee any changes for a long time.
So again, thank, thank you for all of that and all of the work I know that goes into tonight's presentation. And I think this is an excellent beginning to our budget season to set the table for where we're at and the concerns that we need to be mindful of in the coming years. So with that, we'll move to our consent agenda. And are there any questions on the consent agenda? So
I did have a question, two questions. One around the 10.3, which is the tax Sertiary settlement. And two, you know, I'm sure we could say more on a congratulatory note in a moment. But 10.4, we're looking to to extend the the contract of our esteemed superintendent. So I just wanted to to point that out. And obviously, it's based on the cumulative, you know, work that you've done, Dr. Harrison. So thank you for that. Regarding the, sorry, the regarding the tax cert, I just, I think it's important on, from time to time to to point out that this is, or ask about, you know, the impact of of tax certs in our budget. I think tying it to to our discussion that we're just having is one manner of doing that. So, you know, Carol, perhaps my my question would be, you know, you did, in in our prior presentation, you pointed out, you know, sort of expenses. What is, what is this sort of globally? This is not, you know, this is not the biggest tax cert settlement, not the smallest tax cert settlement. But sort of cumulatively, how much are we, do you have sort of the number that we're looking that, you know, in terms of tax certs that we'll be refunding the this year?
So actually, this year is a little bit lighter than I might have thought, although some of them still may come. Because I'm finding right now it's just taking a long time to settle them. And I think that's what's impacting the payout right now. That's good for us and it's bad for us. It's good because I'm able to build a little bit more on the reserve side. But it's bad because every year you don't settle something. That means that it's not going back on the tax roll at the right rate. And so everybody else is paying a little more and that that one thing is getting a refund. So it's 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 bad in that regard. For example, even in this Hudson House 1, if we can settle 2020 tax year, which is our current coming up tax year, that would go back on the tax rolls and everybody would be paying, you know, their piece of it. But if we wait, then we're just being a refund. So I'm trying to get, we're trying to get them settled more quickly. I know our attorneys are working on that, but courts have been very slow this year. The other thing is, when we do have multiple, when we have larger tax cert settlements, we do tend to do them over two or three years, which helps us from a cash flow perspective. So that's important to try and negotiate that so that it doesn't have as big an impact. We always have the ability to borrow if we have to for this. We've done that in the past. Most every district that has a significant tax cert problem has at some point done that, probably. I think if we can continue to budget a little bit more each year, keep building our reserve, we should be on a path where it won't impact us too too poorly.
Thank you. And I guess you just made the tie, but I'll I'll try and just connect it a little bit more. We were just talking about that if housing values go up, you don't necessarily pay more, your tax rate goes down. But conversely, when we give refunds to, not say what we give, but when there's a settlement and refunds are are given to to businesses, in fact, that does lead to homeowners paying more in terms of actual outlay of of money than they would have otherwise. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, it's obviously a rebalancing, but it's not just businesses that refunds. There are homeowners, too, who get refunds or at least have their assessments reduced, which then shifts the burden around. So it's not just business refunds that can have an impact on that.
Well, I would say, yeah, absolutely. Homeowners can do this as well. I think we sometimes forget, or at least when I've talked to some people, they they sort of forget that all the businesses along 119, for example, which is a whole business, commercial strip, you know, are are part of the district and that many of them, as we've seen over time, regularly apply for, you know, or, you know, look for a tax cert refund. And so that is, I would say that, I mean, Carol, that is a much more significant amount of money we're talking about than when we look at from homeowners.
Right, oh, significantly. And that's one of the reasons why every, in June, when I I talk about how we're going to appropriate, how we're going to assign our fund balances from any surplus, that one of the first considerations I have is trying to make sure that we've at minimum replenished the tax cert reserve and if not, add to it. So we have to keep maintaining that that from our surpluses. And that's why I look to try to generate surpluses and not spend everything in our budget every year. We can't do every new and great thing that we want to do because we do have to maintain this. Otherwise, we just have to plan to to borrow, which is going to cost us interest over time. It's an expense that we add in. You know, those are our options. But I do want to keep, you know, saying that that's something we've been doing the last couple of years. We've maintained our reserve at the same levels, if not increased.
And I and I would, you know, add to that, that that's a shift from, we were borrowing money per time. And now we we use the reserve. So that's something that's shifted.
I'm awaiting our our final report for this year. I haven't got it yet for our full exposure right now. We, they, our our law firm puts it together because in, I think the season for filing is ending kind of in November. But although you can really pretty much file anytime, I think it's the scars of
Now, actually, you have to file, yeah, there's by, it's this date in June, but which you actually have to file your grievance and then it works through the process. And usually, the assessor is done with the initial ruling on the grievances by end of the summer, at which point, if you are successful, you're done. If not, you then have the opportunity to take it to court. And that's where most of the commercial ones wind up in court. And then those settlements or decisions happen, you know, over the course of the winter into the following year or sometimes even longer, depending on how long the case has been pending. There's commercial cases that sometimes are open for multiple years, which then lead, you know, us to having refunds over multiple years. But the process is that everyone has to file. And you, and even a commercial property, you have to, they have to file every year, you know, a grievance if they're looking in challenge in particular year. So while we have multi-year settlements, that's due to them filing every year, but it not being addressed until some passage of time.
Right, and some years there actually is no change, but other years there are. So it's it's dependent. And we are waiting for our final exposure report. But I, you know, I don't anticipate it being a great report. I anticipate, you know, having in a sense an ugliness aspect to it. But then there's, they'll list in that report the full exposure, meaning everybody says I want my my assessment reduced to $1. That's usually what, I do some analysis to say, all right, on pass, we've settled that blank percentage. And then I put, I apply those, and that's kind of how I come up with a number. I still have to do that work because I'm waiting for that report. But it's it's still in the back of my mind all the time.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate Brian and Carol. You're you're helping sort of inform what we're voting on with the the tax cert.
Thank you. Any other questions? So hearing none. Can we get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So lots of items on for tonight. But as Michael started to say, one of the most important ones is item 10.4, which is an extension of Dr. Harrison's contract. As, you know, I think, on behalf of the board, that we're certainly appreciative of all of the efforts that you and the Central Office has done over the last year and a half during these extraordinary times. So, you know, we're certainly appreciative of those efforts, but also look forward to working with you over the coming years to continue the work that we've been doing and a lot of the work that was going on before pandemic planning and returning to a more normal cycle where we can try to continue the work and push forward on a lot of the initiatives that we've been talking about, as well as some of the new ones around diversity and inclusion. So congratulations and thank you. Also, tonight, we approved a lot of, not a lot of, we approved all of the bids for the Phase 1 of the capital project that we discussed last week. So we'll look like, we'll be putting shovels in the ground over the summer. So that will be exciting. And then, Dr. Harrison, turn it over to you for your usual report on some of the other items that were in tonight's.
Certainly. As I think is my nature, I want to certainly acknowledge the a number of new staff members that we are welcoming, some new monitors, some new coaching staff members. And we're thrilled to have them joining the ranks of the Irvington family. Also want to thank some of our staff members who are stepping up to serve in some new advisory roles. Notably, I want to highlight a new club that has been formed at the high school and a club that has been formed through student initiative, students that wrote an innovation fund grant to start a new club called the People of Color and Ally Student Union, which is going to be an extraordinary new organization to be able to support our school community. So kudos to our students and thanks to Julie Austin, our new social worker at the campus, for stepping up to lead that fantastic club with our students. And then, of course, to thank Paul Kokosa for the donation to the Scholarship Fund. Finally, in response to Brian's comments, Michael's comments, I do want to thank the Board of Education for your vote of confidence in the I do want to thank the Board of Education for your vote of confidence in the extension of, of my contract. While we have been working in extraordinary times, whether it is extraordinary in the sense of the challenges that we face or just in the spirit of the Irvington community, the good work that we do during normal times, it is my pleasure and honor to serve as your superintendent. And whether we're facing these challenges or when we settle down and able to focus on those priorities, which we have been ambitiously building for years, it is an honor to come to, to work for you and in behalf of our children each and every day. So again, I thank you for your support in that vote of confidence. And I look forward to our years in serving the children of Irvington. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So now we move back to our final community comment portion of the evening. So if there is any community comment or questions, now's the time to, again, put your name, address in the Q and A function of Zoom. While we wait to see if there are any, I'll state that our next meeting will be on the 26th of January here at 7:30 and also on Zoom. Not, not seeing any community comments at this point. Can we have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.